And you come up to speak. Please utilize the microphone, talk into it, give us your name and your address. And remember that this is a board of record, so once someone is speaking at the microphone, please hold your comments in the audience because they tend to blur the tape and make it more difficult to produce an accurate record of the proceedings. And incidentally, based on the numbers here tonight, you'll be limited to two minutes. Please respect that time limit. All right, at this time, we're into PCO 5-16. This is an ordinance for the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, amending chapter 29 of the North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations by amending Article 5, Division 6, entitled Boats, Docks, Seawalls, et cetera. Specifically at Section 5-601, entitled Boats, and Section 5-602, entitled Docks, to establish appropriate regulations for the townhome properties identified as Section 1 through 9 of Aretha Estates subdivision located along the south side of the waterway canal immediately north of Northeast 123rd Street by allowing boats to be moored either parallel or perpendicular to the property line abutting the canal and by increasing the projection of mooring piles or dolphins, floating vessel platforms, hydrohoists, boat lips, and water crafts into the city's waterways or canals from the current maximum of 20% of the width of the canal or 25 feet, whichever is less, to a maximum of 30% of the width of the canal or 30 feet, whichever is less, as measured from the recorded property line, providing for repeal, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, and for an effective date. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll read the staff recommendation into the record. Staff is recommending adoption of the proposed ordinance to amend chapter 29 of the North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations by amending the text of Article 5, Division 6, Boats, Docks, Seawalls, et cetera, especially at Section 5.601, Boats, and Section 5.602, Docks, to establish appropriate regulations to provide for the perpendicular mooring of boats at the townhome properties identified as Section 1 through 9 of Aretha Estates subdivision and located along the south side of the canal immediately north of Northeast 123rd Street, and to increase the projection of mooring piles, floating vessels, platforms, and similar structures from 25 feet or 20% of the width of the canal, whichever is less, to 30 feet or 30% of the width of canal, whichever is less, as measured from the recorded property line, and forward said ordinance to the mayor and council for final consideration. Just to provide some background information, this application was actually filed by a private applicant. We have co-applicants, Mr. Brian Zapala, Angelo Martinez, and Joel Behar. The co-applicants have filed this text amendment to amend Section Article 5, Division 6 of the code which currently prohibits the perpendicular mooring of boats in residential districts. Excuse me, the co-applicants purport that as written, the current regulations create an undue burden and is restrictive since many of the lots in the Aretha Estates subdivision have narrow lot widths on average of 19 feet, and the regulations as written favor lots that are of a greater magnitude that would accommodate boats to moor in a parallel fashion to the shoreline. As with all text amendments, this text amendment had to be consistent with Section 5, Article 5, Section, Division 3 of the code, and meet those strict criteria that are outlined there. Staff believes that based on the criteria outlined, the applicant has been able to satisfy the criteria of the code and is recommending approval at this time. We do have the agent from the applicant, Mr. Frank Woland, that's here to provide a presentation on the request at this time, so I'll give him an opportunity to introduce his item on the record.
We'll take the issues in just a moment. I believe Commissioner Ernst has some questions of staff. I'll allow the commissioner to ask his questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the staff, I noted that in your, in your report given us, no mention was given about the past regulation being drawn up in 2002. Tonight, I will inform you that I crafted this ordinance in 2002. When I crafted this ordinance, we had, a lot of people attend the meeting at that time. We had a terrible problem with boats that were basically parking any way they cared to in that waterway. Thus, a safety issue arise. So with the intent of eliminating any of the safety concerns and making that navigable waterway passable in both directions, we came up with the 25% or 25-foot width to allow for a more safe waterway and wide enough for passing lanes of vessels that either went up or down that waterway. We felt that having pilings extending any further than the 20 feet would, would become a navigational threat, and that improper lighting or improper illumination of those pilings would be a navigational hazard at night. Those were some of the factors that went into crafting this ordinance. Also considered would be how this particular ordinance would be affected throughout the city. Having said that, because some of the waterways may be wider or narrower than this 100-feet waterway that's in question tonight. We did not get any kind of information given us by staff with regards to any input from outside agencies, that included the Coast Guard, the Freshwater Game Commission, or even our own Marine Patrol, as to the viability of allowing further entrance into the navigable portion of this waterway. Nothing was given as to who has a jurisdiction over this waterway. Is it the Coast Guard? Is it the city of North Miami? All these questions were not given to us. We were not prepared by staff to look at these issues and to try to give answers tonight. Consequently, I was left with a feeling of, I didn't know which way to vote on this, either for or against. First of all, I'm in the boating business. Some of you may know that. I own, I own a company that works with show management. My staff helps install docks. One of my biggest customers, or not customers, but one of my biggest, biggest client that I work for is Boston Wheeler. They sign recreational boats just like you all probably own, probably sports fishermen, some contenders. How many people here have like contenders, or most of these are, are fishing boats? Majority of you do. And I would say that you probably have a range of 20 to 25 feet. Is that correct? And I would think that some of you that are petitioning for this may have a boat that's a little bigger, up to 32 feet probably. 30 feet, 29 feet, 28 feet.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll get to you.
We'll, we'll get to that. But, having said that, that was the foundation for this ordinance to be put in place because we had a real problem in there. Not only that, we had rafting, not with two boats, but with three, side by side. Then add that, with that factor on one side of the, of the canal, you then added it to the other side of the canal with those people wanting to raft, your waterway was then narrowed. You then had safety, safety issues. I could be wrong. The Coast Guard may say 57 feet is fine. I have no problem. Staff did not give me those figures. I know you have a, a very good lawyer, Frank Woland, who's very knowledgeable on this, but Mr. Woland is not the Coast Guard, and he's not regulatory agencies. I would want proof from those agencies before I would even consider looking at this ordinance to change it from what we have. We also have the possibility of environmental impact that needs to be looked at. Nothing that staff presented in your package addressed that. So I'm left with, with the dilemma of trying to decide whether or not we, we would want to consider continuing this until our staff gives us the proper information that is needed to address these issues so that we're not spinning our wheels here, allowing this to happen, and all of a sudden find out that when these gentlemen go to Derm to, to seek a permit, they're rejected because it's an environmental concern. And that's very well could be the possibility because you're going to be putting pilings in that aren't there now? And quite frankly, I don't know what the atmosphere is between what we came up with in 2002 and what it is now at 2016. So there was a lot that I felt the staff left out or didn't consider before they presented this package to us. Again, I have, you know, I have nothing to gain or lose from this, being a boater, because all I had in mind was the safety of that waterway and the navigability of that waterway. And if somebody, somebody has a oversized boat that doesn't fit into a 19-foot area, then that may be another problem that we can, we can deal with because of the fact that for years and years and years, that property line was 19 feet. If somebody came in there and has a 25-foot boat that doesn't fit in there, then as a buyer, a new buyer, they should have been aware of the ordinance. Okay, Mr. Chairman, what do you think?
All right, thank you, Mr. Ernst. Staff, do we, can we answer the question definitively as to who has jurisdiction over the waterway?
Well, the waterway jurisdiction is a local waterway, so that's North Miami. This text amendment request was actually reviewed by, or police staff, so that has been confirmed. In terms of the dimensions, that was actually measured in GIS, so the figures that you see there are actual figures from our GIS software with the actual width of the waterway. So that's definitive. I believe your other question is, why wasn't the 2002 ordinance considered? The ordinance before us is really based on the version that was adopted in 2002. It hasn't been altered, so in fact, it is being considered tonight. And we've had several denials over the years, or we've had several requests that weren't honored over the years, and have found that there are instances that are exceptions to the rule. And oftentimes, when you find so many requests for either verences or denials, it's an indication that the code needs to be reexamined. And you never want a code that is more prohibitive and restrictive, and at all times, it's a code that should be reconsidered to make sure that it's consistent with the current built environment. At the time when the code was written, I'm sure there was consideration for the lot width and consideration for parking in a parallel fashion and at a lot width that could accommodate the size of a boat. And certainly, I don't think those that authored it at the time would have perceived putting a regulation in that would call for and require parallel parking in areas that couldn't accommodate it. So one of the things that staff considered was, one, there's definitely repeated issues of denial, and two, there certainly is opportunity to invite further discussion. I would hate to think that our code is closed and will never have opportunity to be reconsidered and looked at. Tonight, the request before you is for consideration and for reexamination. If the board feels that there is certainly no change in the current environment, then I'm sure the, the board will vote as such, but staff believed that it was a pertinent issue enough based on the current activities that we're seeing to bring it back for reconsideration before this body.
What about the question Mr. Ernst raised concerning Derm and environmental impact? How are we dealing with that?
Derm, this Derm submittal is dealt with on a case-by-case basis for each application that comes in. That's an external agency. Once permits are submitted, Derm will do a review of that. We don't internally or locally have control of the Derm decision, so I can't speak for whether or not Derm will approve each application as they move forward.
In regards to navigational safety?
We actually do have a submittal from a US, United States Coast Guard that wrote a letter of recommendation and an analysis.
Did we get that copy, Ernst?
Absolutely, Board Member Ernst. It's a part of your packet. If you flip to the back page of the packet, you will see a complete overview by the US Coast Guard.
Chief Armed Officer.
If I may, the letter stipulates he's, this is his personal opinion. He says boats can turn around in the turning basin in that canal, which doesn't exist, and larger boats can turn where there are no docks, which then would prevent anybody from putting a dock where the boat needs to turn.
I concur with that.
All right, the points are duly noted.
If I have a question or two, please?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Commissioner.
For the staff, have we looked at other cities like ours that are marine communities and their regulations? And how does this proposed regulation compare to what exists?
I'm, I'm going to defer to our city planner that actually did look at other codes within our community, if he could provide some feedback based on that question.
Good evening, planning commission members. We have two requests here. I mean, is the question related to the mooring of the boat or the projection of the mooring piles?
It, it, it's one and the same, sir.
They're basically the same because once you go from parallel mooring, extending your boat out, you need to go beyond what's currently allowed.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And the question before us really is, what other municipalities were consulted?
I mean, no, not consulted. I did look at, you know, some of the codes, and then the difference really in the projection, some, it's, it's, most of them, they have a 25%, as opposed to the 30% that is being requested.
If I would tell you that I did the research, and I looked at Miami Beach, Lauderdale by the Sea, Port St. Lucie, Naples, our neighbors Bay Harbor Islands, North Miami Beach, Coral Gables, Miami Beach, North Bay Village, and Key Biscayne. This recommendation exceeds all of their standards.
I mean, yeah, that's what I just mentioned. They requested 30%, most of them, they have with 25% of the projection, yes.
And they're much more restrictive. Most of them also demand a navigation channel that's sacrosanct, so that some, if there's a fire, if I live at the end of the canal and I need barge work done to protect my seawall, there's all kinds of reasons for a navigation channel to exist, and most, all, every one of those addresses that. Coral Gables says you can go out 25 feet as long as you don't encroach on a 75-foot channel. So I don't know that we've done the due diligence. The county has its own standards that I don't know that anybody's looked at. The county has what's referred to as a D5 triangle about how far anything can extend into the waterway. And based upon the D5 math that the county projects, if I've got a 20-foot seawall, I can extend out 10 feet in the center of that. So I don't know, I think we're in conflict with the county here. And while these may in fact be our waterways, the county claims them as well as Biscayne Bay, the river, and all of its tributaries, and those guidelines exist. So I don't know that with this D5 triangle, we could pass an ordinance that supersedes the county jurisdiction. I think the county's law is trump ours.
And again, I would like to allude to the fact of this letter from this former Coast Guardsman. He is not an active member of the Coast Guard, and as we all know, regulations change and have changed, so I, I would not want to put stock on a recommendation of somebody who's not familiar or doesn't quote me codes or regulations verbatim in his recommendation. I would rather see that come from an active Coast Guard member or someone who has authority over waterways and navigation.
I currently have a call into them, by the way, and they're doing the research on it.
Well, which staff would let me know that, too?
I appreciate the concern.
We seem to be in a situation here where it appears that very possibly this has not been adequately researched, and it might be premature to call this for a hearing at this point, given that there are some serious issues that still need to be reviewed and analyzed.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, but I think we can address your issues, and a lot of people have come out here and they've been out here for a couple hours.
Mr. Woland, please, we haven't called for that comment yet, and I understand your position. Currently, we're having a discussion with staff.
I can address Mr. Ernst's concerns, so I didn't want you to think that that was all, that was, I can address a lot of the concerns if you'll give me the chance, sir.
Perhaps we will, but first, right now, we're discussing this with staff. Both Mr. Pinchon and Mr. Ernst have raised some very valid points, and I'm inclined to come down on the side of, of not having adequate research from the staff perspective. I, I understand that this may seem to be a small issue of a few feet one way or the other, but we seem to be treading into an area where we've not really gotten all the facts together to make an informed decision. And clearly, Mr. Pinchon has researched this, and Mr. Ernst has raised some very valid concerns. I understand that the applicant desires to go forward with a presentation. I see no basis for denying that part, and I think we will allow the applicant to make his presentation, and we will take public testimony, but at the end of the day, we need to consider the amount of research that's gone into this. So at this time, if there are no further questions for staff, we'll allow the applicant to make his presentation. Mr. Woland, you may proceed.
May I call for a point of order or questions to the council, please?
Yes, you may first.
Mr. Chairman, if there were, if there were no decision based upon whatever testimony we, we hear either for or against the item, should there be a, a need for continuance? Could that request for continuance be made before the presentation is from?
I think, I think you, you owe it to the applicant to present their side and then make an informed decision after that.
Either way, one or the other.
Yes, sir. I would hate to speculate.
All right.
They, they, they have a right to speak on the item.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. If there be no further issues, Mr. Woland, you now may proceed.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the other members of the board who are willing to hear me and willing to hear the people who are affected who have come out here and are spending their evening here so that they can be heard as well. And, my name is Frank Woland. I represent Mr. Behar and Mr. Martinez, who are here, and Mr. Zappola is here. I represented him for the filing of the application, but do not at this moment. There are also a lot of people who live on 123rd Street in Aretha Townhomes who are here, and we're asking you tonight to follow staff's recommendation, and we would be grateful if you would not continue this matter, but allow it to proceed to the council. And certainly, Mr. Pinchon and all the research he's done, he can share it with you, as he already has. Mr. Ernst, with the benefit of his fine experience and his opinion as well, he can share it. And, you know, there's no, no need to go on and on. I don't believe there will ever come a day when the United States Coast Guard is going to send a committee or a representative or anybody here to North Miami to say that they have a position or want to take a position in a matter which is purely local, and this is a purely local issue, which our city has the right to pass its own ordinances under the Home Rule Charter, just as the county does, and everyone has concurrent jurisdiction. So let me go on and say to you that it is, in my experience, and you've got the boards, gentlemen? Let me pick these up and ask, ask you all to take a look. This is an issue which affects a lot of people.
Since this is televised, can we get the, the cameras to focus on the boards? Is that possible? Okay, a little bit better.
There we go.
Remember, this is going out on the cable tap channel.
I'd like to start with this photograph, which shows the waterway itself. It shows, this is Apollo's boat, which is the biggest boat of all the boats, standing into the waterway. I've been a boater for a long time, probably not as long as Mr. Ernst. I have a 13-foot Boston Wheeler, a 27-foot Contender, and a 35-foot Contender. I could turn my 35-foot Contender around twice in this waterway. It's, it's really not an issue about, I mean, you could say it's an issue, but in terms of navigability and whether there's enough room, this is a picture of three boats in the waterway, and there's a lot of room between them all and between the docks.
Can the camera zoom in on that picture so we can get a better view of that?
You've got, you've got a bridge right here. This bridge restricts the size of anything going into that waterway. It's hard for anything much bigger than 30 feet to get into this waterway. Mr. Pinchon, a fireboat from Miami-Dade County can't make it into this waterway. The city of Miami fireboat cannot make it into this waterway. There is no emergency boat, unless you want to call the North Miami Police Department an emergency boat, that's going to make it under this bridge to be able to get into the waterway. And I have the dimensions for you as well. So this is an issue which, if, if you look here, and this, this is the scale you have in your packet, this is just a blow-up of what staff has. If you take a look, this is the width of the waterway, assuming that someone went out 30 feet. You don't have to assume that. In other words, you can limit the pilings to 25 feet. The issue is whether a boat could extend 30 feet, because the ordinance speaks to vessels, pilings, or structures, or plates. So there's a lot of things to consider besides just a number, 30 feet. The issue of permitting someone to park perpendicularly is an issue not only, not only for the townhouses, but in Keystone Point as well. You have a lot in Keystone Point that is 75 feet wide. I can understand the sentiment, why you would not want boats parked perpendicularly, or you wouldn't want someone to have a marina behind their house. We understand that perfectly well. But if your house and your lot is only 19 foot wide, and you have to have a setback between each lot or any structure, and you go out 20 feet, well, if your dock is five feet wide, and the motor on your boat is two feet, and you want a foot between the motor and the dock, then I guess you can have a 12-foot boat. But don't try to have a 13 or 14-foot boat, because under the city's present ordinance, it is not permitted. So instead of having people who are appearing like they are appearing tomorrow at the board, at the code enforcement board, to be punished because they're, you know, their boat's too big, or their dock isn't properly configured, I'd like to suggest to you that you do take a real hard look at the ordinance and see if it's not in the public interest, never mind the interest of all the people who are here who would like to have a boat that's 17 or 18 or 19 feet, but that couldn't under the present ordinance, because that's in the interest of the people of North Miami. And one of the things that is a criteria, a standard that you are supposed to consider is whether or not, and as staff has considered the, the criteria, is whether it furthers the development of the city and whether it furthers property values. So I know that as a real estate broker must, showing these townhouses, I'm sure a real estate broker says, and look, look, look at the, got a beautiful canal. estate broker says, "And look, look, look at the, got a beautiful canal here, a beautiful waterway, you have access to the bay." I'm sure that broker doesn't say, "But you know what? North Miami's got some pretty strict laws, and you can only have a boat that's twelve feet long here, unless you're going to break the law." So these gentlemen found themselves in the position that they went ahead, they got a permit from the city, plans, they spent many...how much, how much money did you spend to your lifts, sir? They spent that kind of money. They got a permit from the city, they went to Derm. They got a permit from Derm. They built their boat lifts. Now, one individual is maybe not such a good neighbor, and that individual doesn't like to see people breaking the law. That individual gets to ride around on the police boat, that individual makes the city go after people who violate the law and punish them. And in the case of these gentlemen, the city chose to revoke their permits. Not only did they buy, you know, buy the house so they could have access to the water, but they followed the law, they paid their money, they built their boat docks. Then they bought the boat! Which now, if the city were to revoke their permits and enforce the law as it is written, they would all have to sell. So this is, this is an instance, folks, where respectfully, this law is burdensome, it is unreasonable. The gentleman from the Coast Guard, first of all, like I say, I did call the Coast Guard, actually. The Coast Guard does not give advisory opinions, they don't come and appear in front of the city council. I, I was able to find-
In all due respect, sir, they do. I was involved with litigation during Fort Lauderdale, when the Marine Industry Association of South Florida requested that they come to a commission meeting to address a bridge problem, and they were there. So don't, please, Frank, don't say that. That's not correct.
Mr. Ernst, I'm just telling you what I was advised, because they, I've been advised, when I called the Coast Guard, that they do not get involved in local ordinances and rules about how many feet things should extend. If you want to look at federal law, federal law, and state law pretty much says a navigable waterway is thirty feet wide. And, you know, ask the likes family in Fish Eden Creek, how big is the waterway that goes through their property? They said, "Look, it's navigable, it's thirty feet wide," and that's it, okay? In, in order, you know, the gentleman who wrote the letter after thirty-eight years in the Coast Guard, who is familiar with this particular waterway, very familiar with it, and he commanded Palm Beach, he worked the search and rescue desk, he's been a safety officer, a navigation officer, he was the commander of the Coast Guard Station, the Search and Rescue Center in Key West, he commanded the station in Jupiter for four years. This guy really knows his business. And he gave his expert opinion that the minimum width necessary to have navigation proceed in a safe fashion in this particular waterway, not any waterway, but this waterway, is thirty feet. And instead, we're talking about fifty-six feet, which is a huge margin of safety. And I'd say you have to be a pretty poor boater to not be able to turn your boat around in the width of this waterway. I personally can't imagine it. And, and I hate to think that anyone would vote for or against an item like this because somebody's mean-spirited, or because someone truly believes that you can't turn your boat around, or that it's going to create a safety hazard, to permit these people to put their boat in perpendicular instead of parallel, or to extend a couple of feet into the waterway. So, folks, if you approve this, it will have a very positive effect on these folks, it will have a positive effect on their families, their kids can have boats. I want to thank all of you for coming. I hope you will come again, because I think you see now that this is a very contentious issue, and I can tell you that if you don't come, I'm concerned that not only my clients, but that all of you will suffer a very negative consequence. So I won't take more time, and I thank you all very much. And, uh, thank you-
I have a question, Mr. Wallen, please.
Thank you for allowing public comment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wallen.
No, I'll be happy to answer the question.
Just a, just a couple. Were these boat lifts all built after securing permits?
Yes.
All three of them? Was one taken down?
Not to my knowledge. Other people, I want you to know, have been cited. Other people have had to take their lifts down or have had to sell their boats, because they bought a boat that was too big and they didn't know.
So in the staff report, it reads, "Applicants have applied and secured building permits to construct mooring structures at their respective units." They got the deal. However, due to the narrowness of the lots, they are not able to moor their vessels parallel to the shoreline, and instead were forced to moor their boats perpendicular to the property line.
That's correct, because the lots-
So they got the permits and then did something else?
I'm sorry, sir, the lots are nineteen feet wide, so if your boat is less than nineteen feet, um, well, let me show you on the, on the map.
Yeah, I wanted to see the map again.
Yeah, let me, let me show you on this map, okay? If you have mooring pilings-
Can you swing the microphone around, sir? The microphone, you need to be talking into the microphone, it's a little hard, I know.
Here's, here's a twenty-five-foot boat. Well, actually, let's use a small boat. Let's use a nineteen-foot boat, and this is the scale. So here's a nineteen-foot boat coming into the waterway, and if you wanted to moor your boat, if you want to moor it parallel, it's very easy, if you live over here, to just come in and moor it parallel. But if you want to moor it parallel here, you can't do it, because if you came in here, you would have to cross over your neighbor's pilings, which are even at twenty feet, going to be here, here, here. So it's, it's literally impossible to do. I used to keep my boat at Little River Marina on, on Seventy-Ninth Street on the Little River. And one of the things I learned very quickly was how to back my boat in, because if you're coming up the, the waterway and you want to dock, you just come up, you put your boat in reverse, and you back in. And that's kind of what you need to do, because, I don't know if you can see the lines, here's a nineteen-foot wide property. There's no way to come in this way, because the motor's in the back, and it's not a cruise ship, and it's not a huge boat or a yacht with bow thrusters that you can make go sideways along the waterway. So for practical reasons, the only sensible way is to come in the waterway, back, back into your spot or going forward, and when you leave, you pull out. Simple, easy. They're only nineteen feet wide. You need to give these folks an opportunity to use and enjoy the water in a sensible way. And I would invite any one of you, or all of you, if you're really interested, to please let one of my clients take you out in their boat, or if you prefer the city and the police boat, I'm sure, you know, the city staff could make that possible for you, and see what I'm really talking about, because-
I've done that, sir.
This business about not being able to turn a boat around in this canal, that's nonsense.
Mr. Wallen, I've actually gone there on a boat and looked at it, and I understand, I don't think it's impossible to moor your boat parallel to the shore, because there are a number of boats over there currently that do so. So a question that comes up is if Lot One and Lot Three have perpendicular docking, and the guy in Lot Two has a parallel dock currently, how's he get in and out?
Well, that's the whole problem. That's why everyone needs to have parallel docks.
So we have to tell this guy to go get a new dock, right?
No, sir. But it's the only, in other words, he doesn't need a dock, all he needs to do is have a dolphin piling that he can tie one line to, and for example-
That requires a Derm approval.
If you, if you have a piling, say, right here, and I, I'm sorry to write on this, but I'm going out.
Which is currently twenty-five, you know, you, you realize, Mr. Wallen, you realize that you can go out twenty-five feet if I'm-
No.
Twenty, twenty feet.
Twenty feet, right, I'm sorry. You can't, right. It's twenty-five or twenty percent. So since the canal is less than a hundred feet, it's twenty percent, and it's twenty feet.
It's twenty-five percent or twenty feet.
Whichever is less. So what you're saying, then, is these folks cannot go out farther than about here, okay? So if you put yourself in the position of having spent three or four hundred thousand dollars to be able to live on the water, and, 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 and frankly, I don't know that it makes such a difference to the person living over here, across the water in Keystone Point, whether it is three feet or five feet more. So from my perspective, the safest way to do it, the way that makes the most sense, and, and if you had your boat here, you could tie it in parallel. In other words, you come into your slip, to answer your question, you just loop a line around this piling, then you loop another line right here on the dock piling, and then your boat is sitting between the piling and your dock with a bow line and a rear line, and you could-
I was asking about the guy between the perpendicular docks.
But, but-
The one that's currently there.
All right, this guy here.
The one that's currently there, moored legally, parallel to the dock.
He doesn't, that's why it's unreasonable to moor your boat.
So you're saying there's no boats moored parallel to the dock?
If there are, I can tell you, every time they dock their boat, they're going through, you know, they're, they got to turn off the engine, they got to reach out and grab a line or grab something to maneuver their boat by hand to coax it into the spot. And if you were to take a boat, go for a boat ride, and try to put a boat parallel to the seawall, you'd see that you really can't do it. You can't do it safely, you can't do it practically, and it's a real hardship for these folks to not change this statute. With all respect, because, you know, you know, Mr. Ernst, I know that years ago, there was somebody who lived here who made a real mess of it. They had a bunch of boats, and they had a commercial boat, I remember.
Right.
And, and you know what? The law's been changed. Now you're not allowed to have a commercial boat unless it's actually working, you know, repairing a dock. The code has changed, it's not permitted. So, you know, the thing that you were trying to accomplish, you accomplished it, and it works great for, for the folks over in Keystone. But for the folks in Arida Townhouses, it's overkill. It's unnecessary, and it keeps them from making a reasonable use of their property. And, and I thank you again, and if you have more questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'd like to let the folks who have come to speak have an opportunity to be heard. Thank you again.
All right.
One question, real quick. Uh, Mr. Wallen, were you able to talk to any of the folks across the canal that are parallel parking now and invite them to the meeting?
Actually, my clients didn't, some of the folks who live across the canal are here.
Are they're here, okay.
Sure.
Because we want to hear from them.
I, I understand that.
And get their opinion on this, because they're, they're probably more affected by it.
I only know of one person who lives across the canal who's unhappy, but we'll see who speaks.
All right, thank you.
All right, if there are no further questions, Mr. Wallen, the chair will open the public hearing. People wishing to speak to the hearing are invited to come forward. We have two microphones, so please make your line down the center. Each speaker will be given two minutes. If you would please come forward, state your name and address, read it clearly into the microphone, and we'll take you one by one. Mr. Dixon, you'll monitor the time. Proceed, sir.
Yes, hello, John O'Brien, 2199 Northeast 123rd Street. I'm a resident of the townhomes. And I just wanted to address the, the, the parallel parking issue. I, I park my, my boat parallel right now. I've got a twenty-two footer, and as you probably know, the twenty-two footer with an outboard goes out maybe about twenty-five feet. I have very good neighbors who allow me to, to extend. But at one point, both of my neighbors had boats, and even with a seventeen footer, I would have to come down the canal and watch the wind carefully, and spin the boat just right and shut it off, and have someone in the back, because I tried to swing my boat in, because I literally had to slide completely sideways to dock the boat. And I guess I've grown a little bit more accustomed to boating, I, I now have an open fisherman, I, I wish I had a contender or a whaler, but, uh, so for me to enjoy the ocean, I need to have a, a slightly bigger boat, and if my neighbor sells his house, I will almost likely, for sure, have to sell my boat, because it wouldn't be accommodated there. So I just wanted to, to speak in favor of it, but also that we need to be careful to make sure that it is done correctly, so things don't go haywire for everybody. But I just wanted to address that one issue about, it really is tough to try to get your boat in, and you'd have to have about, so seventeen-foot boat with an outboard, you're out nineteen, twenty feet. And if both neighbors have a boat, or if they put the piling in legally at twenty feet, I'd never be able to come in. So it would really make a huge difference to us. I mean, it's not just a, "We really want it, and it'd be really great."
All right, thank you, sir. Next speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, if you wish to speak, it helps if you line up and make a queue, this'll move along faster. I really don't want to be here until the cows come home.
Okay, my name's Delores Ward, I'm at 2197 Northeast 123rd Street, I'm on the townhouse side. I voted against the ordinance the first time around to have perpendicular boat parking on the canal. The, the issue at that time was whether or not we were going to have commercial boats, commercial docks on our canal. As John has discussed, or Mr. Wallen has assured us, that the commercial aspect of that was eliminated. And with that elimination, I am perfectly okay with perpendicular parking, because John O'Brien is my neighbor, and I know how much he enjoys the waterway, as do all of the neighbors that have boats on the townhouse side. And anything smaller than a seventeen-foot limits their ability to participate on the water outside of the bay. And so I am perfectly okay with the, the approval of parallel parking. I happen to not be affected by it too much, because we are on an end unit, so we have a little bit more length to our property. So it's not too much of an issue for me, but I know how much it's an issue for everybody else.
All right, thank you very much. Next speaker, state your name and address.
Mike Moskowitz, 2215 and a half, Northeast 123rd. I'm in support, not like a lot of people are. But I, rather than speaking about that, I want to share with you a concern that I have that probably will get overlooked, and that is, I took my boat out today. I just went on our canal, and I can rest, I can, I can assure you, I didn't, I wasn't able to physically do it, but I can assure you, there are at least several Keystone homes who far exceed that twenty percent, and they're parking parallel. They have built extended docks, they have put in pilings, they have huge electronic lifts, and when that, you're navigating, and you look at the amount of space that they, they encringe into the waterway, it's going to be in excess of what is allowed. So that leads me to want to say this. If, for some reason, this group or the city council chooses not to support this ordinance, before they deny it, they have a right, we have a right, to ask of you to go and have officials measure every construction behind every house in every canal in the city of North Miami. And if you're going to make these people take their structures down, then you're going to also make all of those other people take their structures down, or alter them. You can't have a punitive ordinance for one strip of homes. And I want you to be, I'm telling you, there are people who have built it out, it's not a problem. I don't want to see those people across the canal lose the construction and the investment they made. And I agree, it's, it's highly navigable. So we have large boats, active boats, it's also a dead-end canal, by the way. So the only people who come in are residents, so it's not as if it's highly trafficked. And there is that, you know, waste pool over by the gymnasium at the end of the canal that collects all of the debris- at the end of the canal that collects all of the debris, which the city should clean more regularly, please, um, that has no structures, you know? It'd be easy to turn around if you had to, but no one's going to have to. There's plenty of space. So keep that in mind. It isn't just the townhomes. It's all of the properties on the water.
Well, of course, bear in mind, this ordinance, eh, as it's written at the present time, only pertains to the Arida development, but we understand that. Next speaker, please.
Alberto Farrow, twenty-three one Northeast one twenty-third street. What the gentleman is saying is true. We, we know only, it's important for us. We need that. We got only nineteen feet of seawall. I got that nineteen-foot bo- eh, boat. And there is no other way to park. It's the only way also. What we forgot before, sometime of the day, the water on the seawall is less than a feet. You can't have your boat there parking. Also, there will be no way to get in or out the boat. And also, there are so many families here, people, worries, and people they left because it's late. Because one person is call, I don't know who it is. I, I lived there only six months, seven months. But it, two times happened, we paint the wall, you know, the, the, the wood. The police can't because it was painted. Who's calling the police? Who's better, our police, who, maybe in an important shop doing something really important? Come and look at me when I was painting my piece of, two times. I don't know. I, I really feel, you know, bad for, for these things. But you know, we really need this. All the community is very safety. I've been in the boating for long, long time. It's a hundred feet. And I turn my boat how I want in the, in the canal because it's a lot, it's, it's a lot of weight. So you guys, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Next speaker, state your name and address.
Eliseo Diaz, twenty-two twenty-three. Um, what I'm trying to say is, I, I had a thirty-seven-foot boat here recently. And I used to turn everywhere in that canal. Never had an issue. I mean, this has been going on for years. It's two thousand, I lived there since two thousand one. We have one neighbor, the same one, that complains all the time, the same person. We all know, you guys all know who it is. And this is unfair. We always get oppressed by the other side, and it's not right. What I want to say is, it's fine to turn there. It's fine to have perpendicular. I'm all for it. And you should guys to just approve it, get it over with, because it's not right what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Alright, next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Beth. I live at nineteen eighty-three Northeast one twenty-third street. Um, I'm a new resident to North Miami. I lived on, on Miami Beach for like nineteen years. I've had a jet dock for nineteen years on Miami Beach. I've always been perpendicular onto our seawall. I moved to Miami Beach. We have attorneys with jet dock. They looked at the, the width of the waterway, everything. They have attorneys. They have Tallahassee, which they approved the, uh, the thing, which he knows that you've done in two thousand one, two thousand and ten, you approved the thing. And so we put our jet dock in parallel, you know, there's only nineteen foot. My, my boat is only nineteen foot to then come along to get a ticket, a violation. It's talking about mooring, boating, everything. And the, uh, floating vessel has nothing to do with, you know, city laws can't be, you know, more stringent than s- state laws or whatever. So, um, and, and the attorney in the thing says it'd be more convenient for everyone to be perpendicular because of the width of our, our land. I understand across the way, there's more land, but it's almost, you know, I'm, I'm a floating vessel. I put, I dock my boat on top of the vessel. And all along the waterway, there's floating, floating, uh, floating docks with their, uh, jet skis. And that is to keep the vessel on top of the floating dock. They all have FL numbers. They all have registrations. My boat is perpendicular to the seawall, not parallel. So I get a violation that I need to be parallel, which I am with everyone. We are limited in the space that we have. And to turn around and it'd be, as they were saying, it'd be conducive for all of us to be perpendicular, so.
Alright, thank you.
And the Florida statute's four oh three point eight one three.
Alright, thank you very much. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Livia Cleary. I live in twenty oh nine Northeast hundred and twenty-third street. I would like to ask you to make an exception to the law for the three people that were allowed to build their dock and, and, and put the, the, the boat as they, they, eh, were doing because they were allowed, allowed to. I don't have a boat. I'm not going to get involved in this, in, 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 in this discussion because I think if you have a, a certain space of, eh, of, in your property, I mean, you shouldn't buy a boat that is big, but I cannot speak because I don't have a boat, you know? But eh, I mean, maybe if you have eh, twenty percent or the twenty, twenty feet eh, eh, space, you, you should buy a, a smaller boat. This is what I mean. I, I don't know. That's my opinion. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And please, please consider that those people were allowed by the city of North Miami to build their dock.
We understand that. Thank you. Alright, next speaker.
Hi, yes, my name is Alfredo Martinez. I'm speaking for my father, Angel Martinez. He speaks Spanish only. We live at twenty-one forty-five Northeast one twenty-third street. We're one of the gentleman with Frank. Um, we did get the, uh, boat approved by the city, but that, there's conversations been going on tonight about what was approved, what's not approved. There's some gentleman here in the staff that have, uh, certain questions that arose. I happen to see that this is a problem that I literally moved in two years ago, that this has been a heated issue in the city of North Miami for some time. Unfortunately, all I've seen is very, I'm sorry to say, gentlemen, some bias towards it. I've served my country since I was nineteen years old, and it seems very unfair that you gentlemen are sitting up here, looking at your staff, questioning the people for which you took an oath to office to serve. So first and foremost, I think you should apologize to everyone here by the comments saying, oh, this is not right and this is not done and we haven't done our homework. No, sir, I've done my homework. Me and my father spent over five hundred thousand dollars purchasing a home, making it nicer, building it, going everything per code, doing everything the way the city of North Miami said so. Spent thirty thousand dollars to then be told, oh, no, by the way, we made a mistake. Sir, you have to take it down. Why? I paid my permits. You told me yes, and now you're telling me no? So what am I supposed to do? What happened to an all-American city? I came here when I was eight years old from Cuba, and I've served my country since I was nineteen years old. I put my life on the line for every one of you, every single day. And you're giving me a clock for two minutes and telling me that I haven't done my homework and that my attorney's wrong and not even giving people the chance to speak about a matter that unfortunately, to be honest with you, is very biased. Everyone here has a voice. Everyone should be heard. And unfortunately, everything that my attorney's already said, I just had to say this out here because I felt that you gentlemen were in the wrong and you should listen to your staff's consideration of what everything was done prior. All, all, all the information that's been presented to you is accurate. Um, county code, derm, all those, uh, all those people have approved these boating, uh, permits. And the city of North Miami approved it themselves. It is literally impossible, and I sent some pictures for you guys to see, to have a seventeen-foot boat and to be able to enter and exit any, any of those residents, the way you're, uh, referring to, sir. And trust me, there is not one, not one, I promise you. There is not one, and I will take you myself on my boat, that is properly approved by the city, that is getting out on nineteen feet. There's only one gentleman that has two properties, which makes it a total, uh, nineteen plus two, that he has a boat dock or lift that, um, allows his boat access into the waterway and exits the boat, um, parallel. There's only one gentleman, and that's my neighbor. Other than that, no one else on our side has any boat that is approved by this staff or this city to exit, um, to park parallel on nineteen feet of property. Absolutely not one person. Because I've done my homework. And if my attorney's paperwork is not enough, I'll bring you myself. So I really would deeply appreciate you guys take the time and serve, uh, your community the right way as I do every single day.
Alright, tha- thank you, sir.
Let the record reflect that.
I'd like to make a point here to, to those of you. We respect your service to this country, but you need to understand the role of the planning commission. When these ordinances were written, there were various and sundry conditions that had to be looked at at that time. We exist in part for the purpose of asking some of the tougher questions, and we expect staff to do extensive research. We are also here recognizing ordinances are not cut in stone and flexibility can be considered. But that's our job to do that. And we are not prejudicial and nor are we in any way, shape, or form discriminating against or for any particular interest. And in fact, if you look at the ordinance, it's very specific as to the people who live along the hundred and twenty-third street boundary. This is the issue we're addressing tonight. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this?
As a point of order, I'd just like to, uh, for the record, indicate that Mr. Martinez did present to this board, uh, a number of pictures.
Yes.
Either eleven pictures.
And they're going down the line.
And they're going down the line. I just wanted to add that to the record. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Walter Miller. My name is Walter Miller. I live at two two six three Bayview Lane. I'm not on a hundred and twenty-third street, but I am in Keystone. I've lived there for over thirty years. It's a wonderful community. One of the key factors or the, what makes it a wonderful community is our access to water. And I truly appreciate it. I've been there for more than thirty years. I've boated for more than thirty years. A seventeen-foot used to be a medium-sized boat. Today, a seventy, seventeen-foot is very small. Uh, horsepower's, a hundred and twenty horsepower used to be a lot, now they're three hundred horsepower. Boats are getting bigger, and I think maybe the city should evolve with that. I think one ma- big factor that came up here is what they need to talk about is that bridge and how that bridge restr- restricts the size of boats, lengths of boats. It's very low, it's very narrow, and that's, that in itself is a restriction to the size of boats that come there. I live on a canal where a seventy-foot boat can come in, no problem. That's not going to happen there. The bridge itself is a restriction. Not only that, not only that, you're talking about if a neighbor has a dock like these gentlemen permitted, went through all the steps they have, is it a hindrance to the neighbor? In my opinion, no. If my neighbor had a dolphin piling or whatever, I'm sure, I know Joel here, I, I'm sure this gentleman will let him tie a line there because that's the way boaters are, are very friendly and very accommodating to others. If I see somebody broke down out on the water, I'll throw them a line in a heartbeat. That's just the way boaters are. I'm sure they let them tie a line up, use their dolphin paling, tie a line to there and ease their boat in. It would be a benefit, not a disadvantage. I think the city needs to evolve with the way the boating industry has, and I think this, this restriction is, is unfair. And I, and I'm surprised that it's only on that street and not all of Keystone or all of North Miami. That just doesn't seem fair to me.
Of course, bear in mind, the ordinance was written a long time ago. Alright, thank you, sir. Alright, yes, ma'am, go ahead, please.
Yes, my name is Elisa Diaz. I own two properties in Areta Estates. One is a cornered property that has twenty-nine feet, so it is not an issue to me. That's the one I live in. However, a lot of the talk has, something that has not been issued, uh, uh, spoken about is the issue of safety. Now, I've lived on this canal for fourteen and a half years, and so far, we have never had an issue with safety. There has never been an accident on our waterway. There is no indication that there is not anything unsafe. Having been a boater of thirty-seven years, having owned a boat, as everyone else has said, there is plenty of room to move around in the canal, uh, regardless of wind, regardless of anything else. Why can we not allow the perpendicular parking of the boats when it is something that would be even safer? In the events of a storm, it is safer to have a boat up on a lift than it is to have it on the water. It doesn't present, and there is no presentation of safety. It doesn't cause, it is not a safety issue at all. So what is the issue here? Is the issue aesthetics? Is the issue that the other side of the canal does not want to look at a marina? Why are people, uh, why are we being discriminated against if we live on the water? We want to use the water. We want to enjoy the water, like others have said. And there is no issue of safety on that canal. That bridge is all the restriction that we need. There's no more need for restrictions than that small bridge that's going to limit the size of the vessels that are going to go in there. There are plenty of spaces at the end that we, anyone can turn if they are not an experienced boater. And even inexperienced boaters, we all help each other. We teach each other. We allow people to moor. If the person in the center doesn't have pilings, if they've got two people with perpendicular pu- pilings, uh, on either side, the people with the, with the lift would allow, of course, sure, put a cleat right on my, on my dolphin. Sure, you could, you could tie up here, you could tie up this way in the same way that we have done it whenever there are storms. When there are storms, we cooperate from the other side and have our vessels in the center of the canal. It's been a very long time since we had a storm, but in the same manner, boaters help each other. And there are no safety issues here. You really need to make that a huge consideration.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any other speakers? One coming. Alright, sir, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sabi Behard, nineteen eleven Northeast one hundred and eighteenth Road in San Souci. After, after hearing all the testimony that has been presented here, I urge you not to embarrass yourselves and vote against this. Because if you do, I think it, it has a lot to do with a lot of things other than the reality of the situation. So, uh, I urge you to, uh, pass the ordinance because it makes sense in every respect from what we've heard here, unless you come up with something that we haven't heard yet. Uh, but I, once again, I urge you to, uh, vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Now, alright.